Good evening. Welcome to our second council meeting in November. Madam Clerk, please read the adequate notice compliance statement.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in preparation of the Council Annual Meeting Notice dated December 15, 2022, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that the fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Ms. Allen?
Here.
Ms. Fox?
Here.
Ms. Hamlet?
Here.
Dr. Levine?
Here.
Mr. Miniger?
Here.
Ms. Sank?
Here.
President Vartan?
Present. Thank you. I am going to ask our members of the Interfaith Council to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Madam Clerk, please read the explanatory notes regarding closed session and hearings and comments.
A closed session meeting is authorized by state statute, was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give her email a copy to the City Clerk's Office at cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to approximately three minutes or so in length. Unless you are using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you. We're now on to approval of the minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve the regular enclosed session minutes of our November 1, 2023 meeting?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, and the minutes are approved. We are on to reports. Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, Council President. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our council meeting. First, I would like to congratulate all of the newly elected common council members: Jemel Boyer, Bob Palowski, and Kevin Smallwood. Last week, on the day following the election, in the morning, in fact, I called Mayor-elect Elizabeth Fagan and invited her to join me in my office for an unofficial welcome to City Hall. During our very nice visit, I offered to assist her in any way that she needed, as I want the transition to be smooth and productive. In my capacity as mayor of Summit, you have heard me speak of the role of an elected official as often being a significant one, with unique challenges and opportunities. The willingness of those newly elected, as well as council members sitting on this dais to serve our community, is commendable. As you continue, complete, or embark on your terms, please know that your efforts to engage and lead our town are very much appreciated. The Summit Department of Community Programs is hosting its annual community Thanksgiving meal on Thursday, November 23, from 12 to 3 p.m. at the community center located at 100 Morris Avenue. The catered meal will include roast turkey, traditional side dishes, pies, and other desserts, as well as coffee and a beverage service. The event will also include a game of touch football, open gym activities, a Thanksgiving-themed family movie, and arts and crafts for children. The event is free and open to all community transportation for seniors and individuals with disabilities. Please call 908-277-2932. That's 908-277-2932, or email DGuidar Jr., D-G-U-I-D-A-R-J-R, at cityofsummit.org to schedule transportation. They started this a couple of years ago, and the first year I went, I was really kind of taken aback at how beautifully presented this lunch is. It's china, it's not paper plates, and the children in the community, great placemats, there's music, there's everything. It's a really wonderful community event, and it's for all kinds of people. I spoke to one woman the first year who has lived here for many years. Her children live in California, so she had no one to be with, so she came here and to be with the members of her community. It's really lovely, and it's expanded, because they didn't have touch football for the first year. Please mark your calendars for the 16th Annual Frozen Turkey Drive hosted by Other Fellow First Foundation. It will take place on Sunday, November 19, from 1 p.m. to 4 p.m. on Union Place near the Summit Diner. Frozen turkeys, non-perishable goods, and monetary donations are welcomed and encouraged. If you have any questions, please call the Other Fellow First Foundation at 908-522-8822. That's 908-522-8822. And lastly, the Summit PBA, Local 55, and Summit's firefighters, FMBA 54, are hosting the annual U.S. Marine Corps Reserve Toys for Tots Holiday Toy Drive. The toy drive will run from today, Monday, November 13, through Friday, December 15. To participate, please bring new and unwrapped toys to the donation boxes in the lobby outside the council chamber at City Hall, or to one of the many locations throughout Summit. A list of drop-off locations is available on the city website at cityofsummit.org. The toys collected through this program are distributed to children throughout Union County and the surrounding area. Since 1947, the Marine Toys for Tots Program has collected and distributed more than 604 million toys to 272 million deserving children in the United States, Puerto Rico, and the Virgin Islands. Thank you, and thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Administrator Rogers?
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. Just two items: volunteer opportunities. The City of Summit is actively seeking volunteers from the community to serve on several of its boards and commissions. Each November, the mayor and common council begin the annual process of reviewing volunteer applications and appointing new members. Terms vary from one to five years of service with an opportunity for reappointment. The city keeps applications active for two years. The deadline to apply is this Wednesday, November 15. A complete list of boards and commissions can be found on the city website, cityofsummit.org/volunteer. Please contact the City Clerk's Office at 908-273-6400, or email cityclerk@cityofsummit.org with any questions. And the last item, parking permits. Just a reminder that the Parking Services Agency has extended its deadline for resident parking and transfer station permit renewals to November 30. Please go to cityofsummit.org/parking to apply, renew, or for more information. And that's all I have. Council President, thank you.
Thank you. I have one thing for my report. So, a particularly concerning incident occurred last week involving Councilmember Andy Miniger. While actively campaigning, he was threatened and physically assaulted. This attack is not only unacceptable, but deeply troubling. It undermines the very principles of our democratic process and the safety of those who participate in it. This moment calls for a unified stance against such actions. Silence can sometimes be a response, but in instances like this, it is imperative that we collectively and unequivocally condemn any form of violence or intimidation in politics. We owe it to ourselves, our community, and our democratic values to ensure a safe and respectful environment for political engagement. Reflecting on the recent campaign that at times was exceedingly negative and often perpetuated false narratives, it is important to acknowledge the tone and nature of our public discourse. It is essential that we create an environment where the prospect of serving is not overshadowed by undue negativity or unfounded personal attacks, so that passionate, well-qualified individuals are encouraged to serve. As we welcome our newly elected officials, let us reaffirm our commitment to a political process that is safe, respectful, and conducive to the healthy exchange of ideas. Thank you. Moving on, we have a couple of presentations this evening. So, we'll start with Donna Patel of the Environmental Commission about our community energy plan.
Yes. Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, Council President, and council members. I'm excited to be here tonight to discuss the City of Summit Community Energy Plan that the Environmental Commission, city staff, and council members have been working on for a year and a half.
Donna, make sure it's on on the side.
Okay.
No.
Let me help you.
Yes, thank you. Okay. So, basically, in 2022, we got permission, the Environmental Commission got permission to apply for a $10,000 grant to create the community energy plan. Why was this grant offered? Basically, the Board of Public Utilities and Sustainable Jersey wanted communities to look at ways they could increase, or, sorry, decrease their carbon footprint and their greenhouse gas emissions over the next three to five years. So, this is really a roadmap for potential actions that Summit can take in the next three to five years with steps that are laid out in terms of, you know, whose responsibility different steps would be, and how things would take place. Basically, we got the $10,000 grant, and this plan is what we created as requirement of getting the grant funding. Sorry, can we go to the, thank you. Okay. So, the plan that we got, sorry, the grant we got was just for planning money, but the Board of Public Utilities has represented that implementation funding, so actual project money will be coming next year, and that communities that have their plan in place will be in the best position and favored in terms of getting the implementation money. So, that is why we are presenting this now. Summit had until May 2024 to create its plan, and we still have that timeframe to spend our $10,000 grant money, but we wanted to get the plan in place to be eligible for the implementation funding that's coming online in 2024. So, for example, if we were planning to put in an EV charging station, the $10,000 can't go toward the electrician laying the wire, or a physical EV station, but the implementation money next year would be able to. So, that's why we're interested in having the plan in place. So, what we've done in terms of the participants, we have been reaching out to community groups and various stakeholders in the city, and we're continuing to meet with them. The Environmental Commission, particularly Department of Community Services, and the Capital Projects Committee have been meeting on this plan to determine what should go into it. We also had interested residents who helped with it, and, as I said, we're continuing to do these stakeholder meetings. We can go to the next slide. So, in the plan, there are three different categories of actions: transportation, buildings, and renewable energy. Transportation actions include things like electric vehicle charging stations, steps that the city could take to look at its municipal fleet, and if there are opportunities to purchase more alternative fuel vehicles, including electric vehicles. Buildings would be really energy efficiency. As the council knows, the city is currently involved in a municipal energy audit of four of its buildings, and we also are currently working with SEAL, as you'll see more detail in the next slide, for residential energy efficiency. In terms of renewable energy, ideas in that category include things like municipal solar facility, helping to streamline our ordinance, DRO, to make sure that we are as friendly to solar as we can be. Also, the idea potentially of a microgrid is something that's in there, which would add to the resiliency of the city. If we had applied for a grant earlier this year that we weren't given, but we could explore with more implementation money, potentially having battery storage at City Hall and solar panels that would allow the building to function at some capacity without power, if there was a long-term power outage like Superstorm Sandy. So, if we want to go to the next page. So, just for tonight, there are 14 actions in the proposed plan, and I guess I should have started by saying the proposed plan will be included in the December 5 council packet with a resolution for you to adopt it if you so choose, as we obviously hope and encourage you to do so. But, one of the actions is the Residential Energy Efficiency Outreach Campaign with SEAL Power. So, prior to COVID, Summit and SEAL had a several-year program, and we've renewed it as of this summer. Residents in Summit are able to get an energy audit of their home for a reduced cost, $49. They are then given options of different actions they could take to increase the energy efficiency at their home. These could be adding insulation to the walls. They could recommend that, you know, they replace a certain window over time, or potentially have, you know, a cover on your attic stairs, a Nest thermometer, things, there's all different levels, and often these actions help save you money and maybe even give you comfort in your home in an area that used to be too drafty, where it was hard to sit at a desk. Now, you can enjoy that nook of the room, or a room above a garage, for example, that might have been too cold and too hot. With the insulation fixed, you can use the room better. So, this is another, we have, as I said, renewed this with SEAL so that residents currently are able to access this, and we just want to make sure that we're getting the word out to all the different residents in Summit. We want to reach out to people who've moved in post-COVID, who may not have been around for the first round of this, or who didn't hear about it and now can learn and potentially take advantage for their own home, for their comfort, their money savings, and to be more sustainable. So, I think that's my last slide, other than the thank you. But, I'm happy to answer questions now, happy to talk to anyone who has questions between now and December 5. But, as I said, the Environmental Commission has worked for a while on this with lots of input, and we are excited. None of this is binding. These are proposed actions. Anything in the plan would go through the normal channels in terms of approvals, in terms of, you know, purchasing, RFPs, anything that's a normal requirement for an action to be taken by the city. Everything in the plan is subject to all of that. So, I don't know if anyone has questions tonight.
Okay. So, we have another presentation and a very full agenda, so I want to limit the questions to stuff that, you know, let's keep them super relevant for now, because we're going to get to talk about it again at the next council meeting, right?
Sure. Very quick, through you, Council President. Very quick question. You talked about funding becoming available in 2024 for implementation.
Correct. That's what the BPU's represented to us.
Okay, perfect. Did they, the last time I spoke with you, and the last time I looked, there was no actual date when that was happening?
Correct. I was on a call last week, well, actually, it might have been a week, November 2, so a little bit more than a week ago. I was on a call, there is, the BPU was on the call, and they said 2024. They don't have set dates. And, again, this wasn't written in stone, but what they're hoping to have for the BPU funding is a program where municipalities can apply for up to $250,000 per year for their projects. The same call discussed EPA funding that's coming down the pike in 2024 that is actually set out, and that funding is on the other end of the spectrum. It starts at a minimum of $2 million for projects. So, that's where we, you know, we think like, microgrid for the city, you know, that's a much bigger project than something on City Hall. But, the Community Energy Plan is not setting out $2 million projects. It's just giving ideas of actions that Summit can look at in the next three to five years to reduce their greenhouse gas emissions.
Thank you.
But, yeah, on top of the BPU funding, and we'll obviously talk to the grant writer and make sure that we're in the loop and in the best position possible to apply for the money when it's available.
Excellent. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Okay.
The SEAL thing, and it's definitely saved us money.
Yeah.
Excellent.
And so, I'll see you guys in December.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. We're moving on to our next presentation from our friends at Overlook Medical Center.
Thank you. Council President, Mayor, council people, thank you very much. My name is Stephanie Schwartz. Would you like us to introduce our team to start with and spell our names?
Sure.
Okay. My name is Stephanie Schwartz. I'm the president at Overlook Medical Center. My last name is S-C-H-W-A-R-T-Z. And with me, I have a couple of my team members.
Clalia Biomonte, Chief Philanthropy Officer.
Lauren Yedbaff, Chief Operating Officer. That's Y-E-D as in David, be like Victor, A like Apple, be like boy.
Hi, good evening. And Robert Peake, I'm the vice president of Facilities, Construction, and Real Estate for Atlantic Health and Overlook Hospital.
Thank you. We feel very honored to be here. I don't think that we've been in front of the council since COVID, so thank you very much for having us. We're very excited. I've been at Overlook and in Summit for the last two years as the president of Overlook Medical Center. It's an incredible honor to hold that role. I've been with Atlantic Health System for the last six years prior to that, so a total of eight years. So, tonight we want to share with you a little bit about what's going on at Overlook, because now that we are past COVID, we have a lot of exciting things going on. So, it was just about 117 years ago, 1905, when Dr. Lawrence bought a very small piece of property up on the Summit for $15,000. And that hospital that he created had 15 private rooms and two wards, and we've come a very long way since then, and we're very thankful for Dr. Lawrence and the community for that vision that they had to put a hospital in Summit. And so, we would like to share that we feel very honored. Quick, quick. Is it working? Oh, there we go. Okay. So, we are the medical center that sits inside the community. We are full of clinical excellence. We have an incredible medical staff, nursing staff, clinical team, and bestowed upon us are many recognitions. This slide are just some of our favorites, and I'll only mention a couple of them. We've been recognized by U.S. News &amp; World Report as one of the best regional hospitals, just recently by Newsweek for World's Best Hospital and number three hospital in the state of New Jersey. Up in the right-hand corner with the green letter A, we are a leapfrog hospital, which is a measure of quality, and I think an A speaks for itself as far as grades. And another award that we're very proud of is our recognition as a magnet hospital. That is a recognition that's bestowed upon the medical center as a result of the collaborative work that our nursing teams, our physicians, and our clinicians work to earn. Very proud to be an excellent hospital right here in Summit, in our community, bringing care close to home. So, we've grown from that very small hospital of 15 beds, 15 private rooms, to 513 licensed beds now at Overlook. And just a couple of these statistics, over 100,000 visits, emergency room visits between our two EDs, one in Summit and one in Union, which is a freestanding emergency department. You can see close to 450,000 outpatient visits at our medical center. You can also see that we bring into the world close to 2,600 newborns, very happy moments at our hospital. And you can see the number of surgeries, close to 5,000. So, a lot of incredible work going on at the medical center. We're also very proud to be a major employer in this community and in New Jersey, and in Union County, and in Summit. We have close to 3,500 team members, 1,600, over 1,600 physicians, and within our group of physicians, we have over 100 individuals who are either residents or fellows in their studies for medical care. So, a very large organization that continues to grow. And now I'm going to turn this over to my colleague, Clalia.
So, we started out in about 2017 to fundraise to rebuild 90% of our campus. It's a 100 and roughly $76 million campaign. Overlook Foundation is raising about half of that money, and we are 80% of goal, thanks to our catchment area and really the community for supporting this effort. It will be the largest transformation that Overlook Medical Center has experienced, and some of the highlights are moving to all private rooms. I like to say, I don't like a roommate when I'm well. I really don't want one when I'm sick, and COVID really highlighted how much more therapeutic it was to have a private room. And we will have that regardless of who you are. When you come admitted, you will have a private room. Lauren is going to tell you a little bit more about some of the buildings we've completed, but if you think about top to bottom, we're building a brand-new eighth floor, which will house a cardiology superunit and a critical care unit, all-new neurosciences superunit behind that, brand-new maternity center, and NICU. We will be expanding surgery both on the outpatient and inpatient side, adding total of 10 new ORs and renovating the existing ORs. We've built a children's center. We've built a parking deck. So, as I said, more than 90% of our patient care spaces will be transformed, and it's an incredibly important philanthropic effort for the community. You know, we started this hospital with one physician. We have an enormous physician partnership, and there has never been in our time a greater participation by our own physicians in transforming this hospital. So, we're very, very grateful for the community's support. We couldn't do it without you, and we're very proud of what we're building at Overlook.
So, pictures say a thousand words, and I'm about to show you some of those pictures in case you haven't actually had the opportunity to visit Overlook Medical Center in the past few years. So, while Clalia talks about transforming probably 80 or 90%, I think by the time we're done, we'll probably touch 100%. Sorry, Robert. But, I'm hoping that you can all see this, and if you ever want to come for a tour of the hospital when you're well and when you don't need the hospital, I am more than happy to tour you around and show you what an incredible facility this is. But, on the top, you can see our emergency department. On the bottom left, you are looking at our imaginary, and that is actually part of our pediatric inpatient unit. That is a brand-new, state-of-the-art pediatric unit for all of our smallest children in Summit. On the right-hand side, we're sharing some stats and facts. I'm not entirely sure that you can all read that, but what's pretty incredible is in the first year of the Hirsch Children's Center, our pediatric emergency department took care of 14,000 children, and that is pretty outstanding, and that was during our tri-demic. So, while we build things and hope we never, ever need them, we actually did need them, and it really defined and supported the needs of our community. In addition to that, we are staffed with a pediatric emergency medicine department that are fully 100% Ford-certified pediatric emergency medicine physicians. We see about 50 children a day. Some of those are admitted, some of them, most of them are transitioned back to the community. In our first year, we did admit 768 children to our pediatric inpatient unit. Here is our parking deck. Now, one might not think that this is outstanding, but it's pretty incredible that this was built during the same time of our pediatric emergency department and inpatient unit, and the intent of this was to take all of our team members who are parking in our community and pull them off of the street and off of municipal lots and bring them onto our campus. So, we have a 650-car parking garage that is located on the hospital's campus in seven levels. Pretty incredible, and that was all built during the pandemic. If you haven't been to the hospital in the last two weeks, we are going to be cutting a ribbon next week on our renovated Stacy and Valerie Goldstein Welcome Pavilion. This is the lobby of the hospital, and really what this does is really sets the tone for confidence, confidence for our patients, our team members, and our visitors. It is, you know, really pretty spectacular that all we had to do was say, to work with our architects and with our construction team to say, how do we create the most welcoming and professional environment for patients and our community members? And they were really able to transform our lobby into a professional, welcoming environment. These are our newest members of our community. This is the Frank and Mimi Walsh Maternity Center. So, not only have we built a brand-new triage unit, we've added two state-of-the-art operating rooms for labor and delivery, and all of our private rooms. This is in transition, so it's not very easy to build and reconstruct a hospital while we're actually functioning within it, but we are doing just that, and it is pretty incredible, and we look forward to welcoming all of Summit and Union County's babies in the future. And here is an example of our John E. Reeve Same-Day Surgery. This is our freestanding surgery center that's located within the hospital. So, you have all of the benefits and convenience of being in a surgery center, but also housed within the hospital itself. So, we're adding two operating rooms to our Reeve Same-Day Surgery, along with prep and recovery, central sterile, and it allows us to be as efficient as being in a freestanding unit, as well as being within a hospital for all the safety that that is provided. This is the building that we're all describing in terms of the addition. So, all of the renovation that takes place in the hospital, this is actually- that takes place in the hospital, this is actually adding an additional level to our east building, a vertical expansion. So we talk a little bit about a maternity center expanding. The seventh floor will house our neuroscience super unit, and the eighth floor will actually house all of our critical care units, as well as our cardiac center. Pretty incredible. We're looking to open those doors by the end of next year, so between October and December of 2024. More examples of what's going on inside the hospital. We are building an emergency psychiatric assessment, treatment, and healing unit. We call it EMPATH, but essentially it's behavioral health observation. So for those patients that can't be admitted to our inpatient unit or are not safe to transition out to the community just yet, we're able to bring them into this unit. We can stabilize them. We can provide therapeutic intervention, either transition them to another inpatient unit or allow them to transition back to the community safely. Pretty incredible that we're able to do this within the confines of our hospital, and we're very excited to open that in January of 2024. And we recently cut a ribbon on an expanded Stacy Goldstein Breast Center. This is a community partnership with the Goldstein family. They wanted to invest in our breast center. We have state-of-the-art equipment and technology, as well as really making it as patient-friendly as we possibly can. And this is really a perfect example of how we've partnered with philanthropy in terms of listening to our community and making sure that we're providing the care that our families and of our community need. So next, I think I'm going to transition it over to Robert Peake.
And this is just one last slide to wrap up our presentation. Just some actions for the future and green sustainability initiatives. So we have a cogeneration plant at Overlook that we installed back in 2010, 2011, and gladly that was done before Superstorm Sandy as we were able to keep the hospital totally functional, lit up, and operating as normal with the loss of local utility power. That cogeneration system is in need of replacements. It's end of life. So we're in the process right now of replacing a 2-megawatt system, which had two engines, with one engine that will produce roughly 2.5 megawatts, so slightly bigger, but more efficient and more, from a green and emission standpoint, much better than what we currently have. We're also adding charging stations. We have charging stations right now. We put them in the new garage. We have them in our existing garage. And we plan on adding additional charging stations, which are not only for our patients and our team members, but also for the community as well. So that's in the process. One of the things that we're also doing with these expansions and renovations of the patient floors is the ventilation systems. We learned a lot through the pandemic. So we are in the process of enhancing those ventilation systems from in terms of isolation and negative air pressure, which you may have heard during the pandemic, to keep our patients, as well as our team members, safe in the event of another pandemic, but also when we have infectious disease patients as well. And then the living wall, as Lauren mentioned, when you come into our lobby, we have a new entrance or lobby desk area, but we also have our living wall, which we did just win the Planscape Award. So again, adding to the sustainability that we continue to strive for at Overlook. So with that, I'll wrap it up, and we could take any questions that you guys may have.
Well, thank you. Impressive. Thank you very much for your investment in the health and wellness of the community, and thank you for sharing your plans with us. Questions? Thank you very much.
Quick comment. The 650-car parking garage, I mean, I really kind of heard that loud and clear, and I thank you for that. That really helps.
Thank you. It's a lovely garage. Lots of parking spaces are still available in it as well, so we haven't filled it up yet. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. I just want to say you've been working really hard. There's so much you've been doing. I've been at a couple of ribbon cuttings and even brought my granddaughter to one. Yes, the Children's Center. And you guys are just amazing. So we are very blessed to live in a community with such an excellent hospital.
And we're equally fortunate to be in a community that supports us and allows us to grow and to provide incredible services to the community. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. Okay, we are on to ordinances for introduction. We have a few. Madam Clerk, please read the first from Finance.
ID number 10796, ordinance to amend the code Appendix A Schedule of Fees contained in the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Summit.
Thank you. Councilmember Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is an ordinance that amends the city code's schedule of fees. Summit charges fees for services provided for licenses, for renting of space and equipment, and for purchase of some equipment, such as golf balls. Departments periodically modify their fee structure in response to increased operating costs, such as materials and labor, or expanded program offerings, or some combination of the two, depending on the department. Fee structure changes often follow a thorough review of surrounding community fee structures as well. In the case of community programs and recreation programs listed in here, increases to some of those fees are due to a combination of labor cost increase, but also expanded program offerings and future program offerings. I move to introduce this ordinance.
My second.
Okay. And the hearing for this one will be on the 5th of December, assuming we get a roll call vote now, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Dr. Levine?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Ms. Sank? President Vartan?
Aye. Okay. Hearing on the 5th for that one. Next one, Madam Clerk.
ID 10766, an ordinance amending Chapter 7 Traffic Section 7-10 One-Way Streets of the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Summit.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Fox.
Thank you, Council President. This ordinance will amend the city code to designate Bryant Parkway as a one-way street running from Orchard Street to Springfield Avenue. Traffic volume and speeding have been a long-term concern on Bryant Parkway, which has been used as a cut-through by cars traveling from Route 24 to Springfield. There's sort of a long history to this project, and prior attempts to address these issues using time turn restrictions onto Bryant Parkway, and enforcement did not address those concerns. In 2019, the Engineering Department held a neighborhood meeting on Bryant Parkway with residents from Bryant Parkway, Edison Drive, and Mead Court. I attended that along with Council President Vartan, and I believe Mayor Radez was there as well, as well as some other elected officials who are no longer here on the dais. A number of options were presented at that time to the residents, and feedback was gathered. And this meeting led to studies of the Morris Avenue and Orchard signal timing, and upgrades to intersection were completed in 2020. Because of the change in traffic patterns due to the pandemic, further studies could not be completed until late 2021 and then into 2022. The one-way conversion was studied in 2022, and it showed that this measure would address concerns. It also pointed to additional modifications that could be done on the Orchard-Morris intersection to add a left-turn lane onto Orchard, which would also improve traffic flow. This past summer, the Safety and CAPS committees approved the implementation of a temporary one-way conversion based on those studies and the recommendations of both our engineer and our police traffic unit. The responses of the neighbors have been overwhelmingly positive, and the traffic police on site have observed marked improvements. The temporary conversion has been extended, and this ordinance would make the traffic pattern permanent after the public hearing on December 5th. I enthusiastically move this ordinance for introduction.
Do we have a second? Yep. Okay. So the hearing for this one will be on the 5th, and we'll take a roll call. Sorry?
Can we make a comment?
Sure.
I would just like to say on this one, I guess we're doing a roll call vote, correct?
Yep.
I have talked with Director Schreger about this probably for the last week or so, but I do have concerns about putting this on the agenda right now. I was hoping that we would wait another, maybe two weeks or so. I would like to spend some more time engaging the residents that have at least approached me, and I'm going to be able to provide those names to you, Director Schreger. I'm certainly not a no for Bryant Parkway being a one-way, but I do have some concerns about the information that is included in the study. I'd like to have in writing what is included in the resolution, what's required from DOT and Union County. Director Schreger, I think from what you spoke to me today back and forth, we don't need anything from DOT but Union County. It seems like there could be some things that we need. I'd like to understand where we're at from the left-turn signals at Orchard. Right now, it's really getting jammed up. There's only about a three or four-second. I spent a lot of time down there with residents, and it's really tough to get down Orchard. Obviously, now some of that's from PSENG, but I'd like to see where we're at. That, in the Colliers Engineer Report that was in 2022, it lists Springfield Avenue under the jurisdiction of Summit, when it is obviously a county road. So I just want to make sure that everything in that study is reflected accurately. I'm not sure that matters. I'm also worried that we don't have crash statistics in the 2022 report, and also don't take into account the pedestrian and cyclist data. I'd also like to understand how this impacts the plow routes for the county and the recycling for the city and the plow for the city. Finally, PSENG is still actively working in this area, and I don't feel we are able to make a complete and accurate evaluation until that work is complete. And then lastly, I would like to see the costs associated with making this one-way. But again, I'm not a hard no on Bryant Parkway. I just, I think we have a little bit more work to do, and I'd like to see us take a little more time.
Okay. Any other comments at this time? Okay, we'll take a roll call vote on the introduction.
I agree that there's some extra work, some more work we need to do. The only thing I would say is, we had talked about it at the last council meeting. We had a resident com, Anita, and she had asked, she had said to the council that when she had spoken with our police, someone from the police department, that they had told her it was permanent. We said it wasn't permanent, so I'm not a hard no either, but I just think that there's some more work that needs to be done, and I've expressed that to Director Schreger.
Sure.
May I just point out that we've been working on this for seven years, and I'm really sorry that some of you were not aware of what was going on seven years ago, but this has not been something that has been likely taken. So, just saying.
May I make a comment?
I would just like to say that as a new councilperson, I have to look at everything from a fresh start, and it's not that I'm saying, I'm sure, I know all about the engagement. I know there's a lot of issues, and I know we need to do something. But taking a fresh look at the engineering report that was just done in 2022, I have to do my due diligence and make sure that everything is satisfactory.
Yeah.
Councilmember Hamlet, you've had this packet since Wednesday, and, you know, this is the first that I've heard any of this from you. You know, this is coming out of the Safety Committee, and if you had these concerns, you could have talked to me about them, you know, five days ago, but instead you chose to present them on the dais. I had no clue that this was what you were going to be doing. You've been meeting with Director Schreger. You've been meeting with Lieutenant Daly. I'm more than frustrated because we've had a number of discussions, and a lot of these issues have actually been answered. And, you know, for you to raise it, you know, at this point, without, you know, without having these conversations is really not helpful to the process.
Actually, with all due respect, I actually called Jamie Levine because I thought it was in her committee right prior to the meeting, and she told me it was your, it was your committee, which I didn't realize. This is...
It is in the packet.
Understand, but again, at the last meeting, we were not aware that this was going to be turned permanent this soon, and I have spent a lot of time working with Director Schreger, just trying to answer some questions, and that's all.
We were quite aware that it was going to be turned permanent this meeting. We said it was going to be on this agenda, and it's not going to be permanent until we vote on it on December 5th. So there is still three weeks for more information to be gathered. So I would say, given that we're running up against the end of the year and snow season, we ought to introduce the ordinance, and then if you're not satisfied at the next meeting, you can vote now. Is that fair?
Yes.
Okay. I think we've exhausted the conversation about this for tonight. So let's do a roll call vote on the introduction of this one, please.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Dr. Levine?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Ms. Sank?
Aye.
President Vartan?
Aye. See, after all that, unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Next one, Madam Clerk.
ID number 10763, an ordinance amending Chapter 35 Articles 17 through 19 of the Development Regulations of the General Code of the City of Summit to address the requirements of the Fair Share Housing Act, Statewide Non-Residential Development Fee Act, and Uniform Housing Affordability Controls, UHAC, regarding compliance with the city's affordable housing obligations.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Levine.
Thank you, Council President. Ordinance 10763 proposes some changes to our city's affordable housing ordinances. And I'll give a brief summary outlining these proposed changes. So currently, our affordable housing ordinances are spread out in our code book among various chapters, mainly Chapter 8 and Chapter 35. What this will do, this ordinance, it will place all of the ordinances together within the DRO, which is Chapter 35, since they all primarily affect development within the city. The second type of change in this proposed ordinance will help bring it up to date through the current housing cycle. The only changes being proposed relate to the residential development fee and include an increase from 1%, which it is now to 1.5%, which is the max allowed by COA, which is the Council on Affordable Housing. These fees are the main vehicle the city uses to pay for affordable housing efforts. Most of the city's residential development is carried out by developers who come in, tear down, and rebuild new homes. 11 of the 15 surrounding municipalities collect 1.5% of a fee already, and Summit is only one of four of the local municipalities still at the 1% level. So developers are used to that percentage amount. And then the next piece, as far as changes related to the residential development fee, include changing the definition of new residential development and closing one of the loopholes in the DRO. So staff has refined a definition and a kind of exemption to reduce how developers attempt to avoid paying the fee. And so there's a new definition for new residential development. So therefore, fewer of the developers can seek to avoid paying their fee. This will simultaneously protect residents who are simply making minor renovations to their home and closes the loophole for the developers. After tonight, because this involves the changing the DRO, this will go to the planning board. They will meet on November 27th, and then it will return to us. We will have our hearing on December 5th, and we will vote on December 5th. I move this ordinance for introduction.
My second.
Okay. Comments?
Councilwoman Levine, do you know offhand if a...
Can I speak in the microphone?
Sorry, can you hear me? Oh, there you go. Is it part of, in there, that if a new...
You gotta speak into the microphone.
A new...
Just because people at home can't hear you.
If a new corporation comes into Summit, is there, does this make sure that nobody is exempt from that? Do you know?
I mean, I have the definition here of what new residential development is, and it's a new definition. It'll be, it's in the packet right now that you can read.
Yeah, okay.
So if it meets those criteria laid out, then the answer is yes. It's just changing some loopholes.
It's residential development.
Oh, yeah, sorry. You're right. Residential development.
So we're not talking about the commercial development fee, which is a different, which is a different definition.
Okay.
I just... Thank you.
This one, at this point, is related specifically to residential development.
Okay. All right, great. Are we going to address commercial? Okay, sorry.
Not right this minute.
I believe that fee has already been set.
That fee is set. That fee is the maximum that the state permits, which is 2.5%. So we're not addressing that at this moment.
Got it. Okay, I just want to make sure that the corporations at some point are not exempt, because I like the fee, so that's all.
Yeah.
That's a good thought. Thank you.
I join you in liking the fee. Okay. I think we're ready for a roll call vote on this, right?
Yes. Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Dr. Levine?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Ms. Sank?
Aye.
President Vartan?
Aye. Okay. December 5th for that one as well. Last ordinance for introduction. Madam Clerk.
ID 10493, an ordinance of the City of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey, amending Chapter 18 entitled Streets and Sidewalks of the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Summit by adding Section 18-13.1 at SEC entitled Wireless Telecommunications Use of Public Rights of Way.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Levine.
Thank you, Council President. This proposed ordinance is 10493. It establishes regulations for telecommunications companies to use when using our public right of way by amending Chapter 18 Streets and Sidewalks of the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Summit. This ordinance creates an administrative internal process for the review of applications submitted by wireless providers for the installation of telecommunications, including small cell wireless facilities in public rights of way. The requirements are intended to encourage the colocation... to encourage the co-location of wireless facilities on, on the same poles, meaning, and minimize aesthetic and functional impacts to the public streetscape and sidewalks. The hearing for this ordinance will also be on December 5th. I move this ordinance for introduction.
I second.
Okay. Any comments? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Dr. Levine?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Ms. Sank?
Aye.
President Vartan?
Aye. Okay. December 5th for that one. Thank you. And moving on to resolutions. We're going to start with one from Law and Labor from Councilmember Sank.
Council President, members of council and our Summit community, I am proposing a resolution recognizing the growing problem of antisemitism in America and for the adoption of educational tools to address it. This resolution was first referred to the mayor at council in June of this year, responding to what were already documented cases of rising antisemitism across our country. It was then referred to the Law and Labor Committee. And when I was appointed to council on October 3rd, I also became the chair of that committee. I received a file assigned to our committee and the very first document that I saw was this important resolution. Little did I or the world know that just four days later, on October 7th, Israel would suffer a horrific attack by Hamas, a terrorist organization, and that Israel would then be forced to respond, attacking Hamas in Gaza with tragic consequences for both Israelis and Palestinians. And that as of this moment, the war with all its pain and suffering is continuing. Which brings me back to this resolution and the rising tide of antisemitism in our country, which in one month has increased by some 400% in reported incidents and attacks. This working definition of antisemitism was actually adopted by the International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance in May 2016. And since that time, it has been adopted by some 40 countries, by the US State Department, and hundreds of individual communities across the United States. While some may say, why bring this up now with all that's going on in Israel and Gaza? The very fact that the war has triggered a dramatic increase in antisemitic attacks in our country. Witness what is happening on college campuses and the demonstrations blaming the Jews, all and all of our country's Jews, including our own community, on what's happening, means that it's even more important that we define what antisemitism is and how it affects Jews in our country throughout history, right up to today and beyond. And so I would like to now read the resolution in full.
Excuse me. Councilmember, would you please use perhaps one of your neighbor's microphones? You're not coming through quite clearly.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Is that better? Is this better?
Yes.
DLUs would work. Okay. All right.
Just thinking into it.
I want you to hear this. Okay. A resolution recognizing the growing problem of antisemitism in America and calling for the adoption of educational tools to address it, November 13th, 2023. Whereas the City of Summit stands with other municipalities across New Jersey, including Westfield, Berkeley Heights, New Providence, Scotch Plains, Milburn, Livingston, and many more against antisemitism. And whereas antisemitic attacks across New Jersey have been on the rise since 2019. And whereas such attacks across the nation have risen by almost 400% so far in 2023 over the last year. And whereas the recent American Jewish Committee State of Antisemitism in America report found that more than one in three Jews, 37%, said they have been victims of antisemitism over the past five years. And whereas antisemitism, including harassment on the basis of actual or perceived Jewish origin, ancestry, ethnicity, identity, affiliation, or faith, remains a persistent pervasive and disturbing problem in American society. And whereas Jews continue to be a targeted minority in the United States and are consistently the most likely of all religious groups to be victimized by incidents of hate, and such incidents are increasing at an alarming rate. And whereas we acknowledge that because of these attacks, our area synagogues felt compelled to reevaluate their own security measures to keep their congregations safe. And whereas City of Summit officials and institutions have a responsibility to protect citizens from acts of hate and bigotry, including antisemitism, and must be given the tools to do so. And whereas valid monitoring, informed analysis and investigation, and effective policymaking all benefit from accurate and uniform definitions. And whereas the International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance, IHRA, by consensus vote of its members, adopted a working definition of antisemitism in May 2016, which has become the internationally recognized authoritative definition of antisemitism for use by governments and international organizations. That definition reads in full, antisemitism is a certain perception of Jews, which may be expressed as hatred toward Jews. Rhetorical and physical manifestations of antisemitism are directed toward Jewish or non-Jewish individuals and/or their property, toward Jewish community institutions and religious facilities. Now, to guide IHRA in its work, the following examples may serve as illustrations. Manifestations might include the targeting of the state of Israel conceived as a Jewish collectivity. However, criticism of Israel, similar to that leveled against any other country, cannot be regarded as antisemitic. Antisemitism frequently charges Jews with conspiring to harm humanity. It's often used to blame Jews for why things go wrong. It is expressed in speech, writing, visual forms, and action, and employs sinister stereotypes and negative character traits. Contemporary examples of antisemitism in public life, the media, schools, the workplace, and in the religious sphere could take into account the overall context. But here are 11 examples. Calling for aiding or justify the killing or harming of Jews in the name of a radical ideology or an extremist view of religion. Making mendacious, dehumanizing, demonizing, or stereotypical allegations about Jews as such, or the power of Jews as collective, such as especially but not exclusively the myth about a world Jewish conspiracy, or of Jews controlling the media, economy, government, and other societal institutions. Accusing Jews as a people of being responsible for real or imagined wrongdoing committed by a single Jewish person or group, or even for acts committed by non-Jews. Denying the fact, scope mechanism, e.g. gas chambers, or intentionality of the genocide of the Jewish people at the hands of the National Socialist Germany and its supporters and accomplices during World War II. Clearly, I'm speaking of the Holocaust. Accusing the Jews as a people or Israel as a state of inventing or exaggerating the Holocaust. Accusing Jewish citizens of being more loyal to Israel or to the alleged priorities of Jews worldwide than to the interests of our own nation. Denying the Jewish people their right to self-determination by claiming that the existence of the state of Israel is a racist endeavor. Applying double standards by requiring of it a behavior not expected or demanded of any other democratic nation. Using the symbols and images associated with classic antisemitism. For example, claims of Jews killing Jesus or blood libel to characterize Israel or Israelis. Drawing comparison of contemporary Israel policy to that of the Nazis. Holding Jews collectively responsible for the actions of the state of Israel. And whereas antisemitic attacks are criminal when they are so defined by law. For example, denial of the Holocaust or distribution of antisemitic materials in subcountries. And whereas the IHRA working definition has proven to be an essential tool used to help determine contemporary manifestations of antisemitism. And whereas in the United States, the IHRA working definition is utilized by various government agencies, including the US Department of State, the US Department of Education, and can be utilized by law enforcement agencies in monitoring, training, and education. And now, therefore be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of Summit. One, it does hereby adopt the non-legally binding International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance Working Definition of Antisemitism in Full. Two, it will ensure that the IHRA Working Definition of Antisemitism is available as an educational resource for the Board of Education, Police Department, and other agencies responsible for addressing antisemitism and other forms of discrimination. Dated November 13th, 2023, and certified by Rosalie Lecantiz, our clerk. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll take a second.
Second.
Thank you. Comments from members of council?
Sure. Thank you, Councilperson Sank. Among your first actions as a brand-new councilperson was to pursue this. And I'm really grateful for your leadership. And in a short time, you have left a very positive mark on your community. So, well done. And thank you for that. People have asked me, why do we need a municipal ordinance to define antisemitism? And what I, how I answer them is, it's how we protect our democracy. And our way of life is anytime there's extremism and bigotry of any kind, we have to eliminate it and stomp it out wherever it happens, including in Summit. And this is an example. And I'm proud to live in a community where the governing body prioritizes finding a way to define antisemitism. So that way, the next step can be to recognize it and then to really eliminate it. And I'm proud that I'm part of the governing body when it's coming before us, so I can participate in the vote. I have a lot more to say, but you gave a very comprehensive presentation, so I might, I might hold back a little bit. But thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to thank Councilmember Sank for, for taking the lead on this and, and really, you know, making sure that this happened. I'd also like to thank Rabbi Avi Friedman and Ken Peskin for bringing this to our attention and keeping on us to get this done. We, you know, it's, it's one of those things that takes time. It takes, there's a lot of process. But it's, you know, I think that it's important as a first step to identify. This is an important definition because in order to address this issue, the first thing we have to do is define it. And I think sometimes we, we get these feelings. When someone says something to us, you get this icky feeling and you don't know, is it antisemitism? Is it not antisemitism? And this gives us that guidance. It gives us that answer. So we can all be on the same page. So I want to thank everyone who was involved in making this happen.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say thank you, Councilmember Sank. It was a pleasure to watch you lead through this. And I know it took a little, little time with the lawyers and everything, but I just want to commend you for getting this done.
Well, and I meant to thank Yoyah because she is the other member of the Law and Labor Committee. And I, she was fully supportive. So I'm most appreciative. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep.
Thank you, Council President. Given the horrific terrorist attack on October 7th, thank you, Councilwoman Sank and Hamlet. Given the horrific terrorist attack on October 7th and what we've seen across America recently, I feel that this resolution is an important education tool for addressing antisemitism. I'd like to share my opinion, which is outside the scope of this ordinance as we speak. So I speak for myself and as we speak about what is happening around the globe. I know that many of us in this room were affected by 9/11. There are people that were lost in Summit. And I strongly believe that anytime there is terrorism, we need to reject it. And it doesn't matter where you were at the time of 9/11 or who you were. If you were on an airplane or in a building that got brought down, that was the end for you. Because for someone who didn't believe in democracy and America and the sovereign, and Israel and the sovereignty of our countries. So, excuse me, sorry. I don't know what the answer is. And I don't know how we get to a place where this is resolved. And it's a geopolitical issue that is not resolvable by our council as a councilwoman here. It's complicated. And I'm genuinely concerned about the peace and tranquility for my Jewish friends. And I think there are people out there that will be able to solve this problem. But we're taking a step in the right direction by creating an antisemitism education tool for people to work by. My goal here at home is to stay committed to antisemitism. And I believe that as a Summit community, we must stay committed to all our populations that are, that experience discrimination, whether you're Asian-American, whether you're Hispanic, whether you're African-American, LGBTQ. We must remain resolute that what makes this community strong is that we really watch out for each other. We take care of each other. And that's, I know that we keep saying it, but it's the most extraordinary thing about our community. So, thank you. Thank you for doing this.
Thank you. I guess I'll just wrap up by saying I'm thankful to Rabbi Friedman for bringing this to our attention. I'm thankful for his patience with us as we transitioned leadership to our new council members. And I'm thankful for the opportunity to support and adopt this resolution because, as, as put many times up here, we can't begin to address something we can't define. So this is a good first step. I think at this point we should, yeah, sure, Mayor, sorry.
As you all know, a mayor doesn't vote unless there's a tie. And sometimes that's okay. I don't mind not taking a vote on some things. But on this one, I'm really sorry that I cannot vote because I would vote a resounding yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay. Should we just do a roll? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. Members of the public, comments from members of the public.
Hi, good evening. I'm Avi Friedman, F.R.I.E.D.M.A.N., 34 Hartley Road, and Rabbi of congregation, or Shalom. So first of all, I just want to thank all of you for taking this resolution so seriously when we brought it to your attention. And I think I have met with all of you, or spoken to you, or exchanged emails with you, some of you more than once, or more than twice. So I appreciate you taking the time to hear me out. I just want to say it was not just I who brought this to you. I do want to give credit to Ken Peskin, Summit resident, who brought it to my attention. But if you look back at the original letter, it was from all three Summit congregations, all three rabbis, and the presidents of all three congregations. Because this is not just an individual issue. This is a community-wide, nationwide, international issue. I just want to very briefly say, this resolution does not create any kind of financial or legal obligation for the city. And this resolution does not rank expressions of hate. This is not trying to figure out where antisemitism fits vis-à-vis other expressions of hate. But I will tell you what this resolution does. This resolution tells the citizens, the Jewish citizens of the city, that you see us. And you see our experience. And you see what we've been going through, in particular since October 7th, but going back over five years to the Tree of Life shooting in Pittsburgh and even before that. As people say- As people say, antisemitism is the oldest form of hate in the world. I'm not sure if that's true or not, but it's got to be in the top five, I imagine. But all joking aside, I thank you for considering this resolution, and obviously I can tell from your comments, I look forward to a passing.
Thank you. Thank you, Rabbi.
Good evening. I'm Reverend Dr. Robyn Tanner. I'm one of the ministers at the Beacon Unitarian Universus Congregation, but I am here before you tonight at my role as president of the Summit Interfaith Council. The Summit Interfaith Council has considered this resolution, and we are in full support of it, and we are prayerful that you will adopt it this evening, which it appears so. Thank you, Councilmember Sank, for introducing it. We understand that antisemitism has been on a precipitous rise across the country before October 7th and in New Jersey, and now we are deeply frightened for the safety of our communities and for all of our Jewish siblings here in Summit and well beyond. We hope that by being able to define antisemitism, we can both respond and name it when it is present in our community, but also, as a people of hope, as an interfaith gathering, we also hope that we can move beyond reacting to also being to proactively create a community of inclusion and to light the way for municipalities across New Jersey. So thank you for your consideration of this evening and the work well beyond tonight.
Thank you. Okay, other comments, members of the public? I think, let's just do a roll call vote on this one, please. Madam Clerk.
Ms. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. Fox.
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet.
Aye.
Dr. Levine.
Aye.
Mr. Miniger.
Aye.
Ms. Sank.
Aye.
President Bartin.
Aye, and the motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay. On to the next one. We have one resolution from Safety and Health, Councilmember Farnin.
Thank you, Council President. Resolution 10815, and this resolution authorizes the acceptance of an Office of Emergency Management State Homeland Security Grant in the amount of $10,000. This grant will enhance the city's emergency management program to prevent, protect against, respond to, and recover from acts of terrorism, natural disasters, and other catastrophic events and emergencies. There is no match for this grant, and I move this resolution.
And we have a second. Councilmember Sank. Can we get a second for you?
Just say second.
Yep. Thank you. Thank you. Because you're, because you're on Safety and Health with Marjorie.
You're my partner on Safety.
Yes, yes.
I'm so reading my resolution.
It was an excellent resolution.
Yes, thank you. Councilmember comments? Comments from members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And community programs and parking services, number one, Councilmember Hamlet.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution 10782, which will authorize the grant application submission and acceptance of grant agreement for the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, for the year 50. This resolution will authorize the grant opportunities for $5,000 submission for the senior connection bus, $10,000 for Share the Fun Club, $75,000 for Maybe Playground. The City of Summit recognizes and accepts that the grant award may be of a lesser and, a lesser or, or greater amount, and that meeting is, I have to get the date of the actual meeting for the grant, I don't know if you know it, Rosie, but I don't think it matters right now, but I'd like to move this resolution.
And I second. Okay, comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Motion carries. We are pushing the second one, so we're going to move the Resolution 10771 to the meeting on December 5th, so stay tuned for that, and we're moving on to finance. We have one from there, Councilmember Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is number 10757, and this resolution authorizes a one-year agreement with Hawkins, Delafield, and Wood LLP for our bond council services for 2024, not to exceed $60,000. Specialists in the area of municipal bond law, their services include providing assistance with prepping our capital bond ordinances, the financing of those ordinances through the issuance of notes and bonds, and continuing disclosure requirements. The issue was tabled last week for further discussion, and from that discussion came a statement from CFO Tammy Baldwin, which I want to paraphrase here. The firm has served the city diligently for 28 years, providing Robert Vinefield, our bond council attorney with the firm, and his associate, Michelle Lukopoulos, with extensive history and institutional knowledge when it comes to the city of Summit. In 2016, an RFQ was put out with pre-established rates. This firm met those rates, and the rates were actually lower than the rates they were previously charging the city. No increase has been requested since 2016, and again, no rate increase was requested here in the 2024 renewal. And to paraphrase, Rosie, I believe you have the full letter from CFO Baldwin as well. This firm comes highly recommended for cities, for the city's bond council services by our CFO and our city administrator, and I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Okay, comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. On to capital projects, number one, Councilmember Levine.
Thank you, Council President. Resolution 10778 authorizes a bid re-advertising for the reconstruction of Transfer Station Packer Number Two. One bid was received, but it had to be rejected for two technical reasons. The checklist was incomplete, and the contractor registration could not be verified. The work will cost about $55,000. This machine is critical to the health and welfare of the city, so we do need to get it repaired. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Okay, comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Excellent, thank you very much. Number two, Councilmember Levine.
Thank you, Council President. Resolution 10770 authorizes the 2024 Earth Day activities. This will represent the 18th Annual Earth Day Cleanup Event, and the proposed dates are April 13th and April 14th of 2024. The sites targeted for cleanup will be selected by the Environmental Commission and include Passaic River Park, Bryant Park, Memorial Fields, Village Green, and many others. I have participated in the past, and it's a wonderful community-building event that makes a real difference. The EC does a great job coordinating the sites, and I move to adopt this resolution.
And I second it.
Okay, comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you very much, and I think we're bundling the next three. Councilmember Levine.
Thank you, Council President. As discussed in closed session, Resolutions 10774, 10780, and 10816 all serve to declare vacancies in the Department of Community Services and the Engineering Department. These are all crucial positions which need to be filled, and I move to adopt these resolutions.
And I second them.
Okay, comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motions carry. Thank you very much. We're on to the consent agenda portion of the evening. We'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Anybody?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Okay, any comments on the consent agenda? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Thank you. All right, we're on to the public comment period of the meeting. At this point, council welcomes comments from any member of the public about issues that are not topics on tonight's business agenda. If you have a prepared statement, please provide a copy to the city clerk and tell facilitate an orderly meeting. Please keep your comments to three minutes.
Councilmembers, Jamelle Boyer, 204 Morris Avenue. I was just going to come up here and talk about Bryant Park. There's an obstruction in the pathway. Some members, some, excuse me, some residents reached out to me, and there's nails, and you know, it's kind of, it's kind of concerning. I didn't see it myself, but if we can get someone to, to look at that, I'd appreciate it. I was just going to talk about that until Councilmember Sank, your, your reading, you know, really, really touched me. Yeah, I, all forms of, you know, racism, antisemitism has no place here in Summit, definitely. And I will certainly make sure on council that our places of worship are protected. I know that our, our Summit Police Department is doing a good job there, but I also want to commend our synagogues. The safety and security that, that they have is amazing, so they do a good job. Last but not least, I want to thank you all for your service. It is definitely not an easy task. Nora, you've, my, my wife babysat your children. We are a family here in Summit, and above all else, I think we have to get back to unity. Councilwoman Levine, I used to run by you when you were knocking on doors. I used to say, man, I got to get to work.
Yep. Yep.
You are, you, you're an amazing person, and you've always been considerate and cordial, and I appreciate that, and you've done an outstanding job on council, and I appreciate your service. So, thank you all.
Thank you.
Council President, can I just make a quick comment?
Sure.
Mr. Boyer, I think when you mentioned the nails, I, I was on the same thread as you, I think it was Park Line, not Bryant Park, right?
No, it was Bryant.
Was it Bryant? Are you sure?
Yeah.
Okay, I might have made a mistake. Okay, might have been different.
Let's see, click fix that, right? Or we'll, we'll have Michael circle that out. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Can we close public comments? No? Couple people?
Council President, through you, I just want to ask a quick question. Is, I reported a branch that was on Bryant Parkway, so I don't know if, Bryant Park, so I didn't know if that was still there.
Who, who are you asking?
Jamelle.
Oh.
Yeah. Yeah, is it still there?
I'm not, I'm not sure. I just asked the resident if that was still an issue, and he said yes.
Okay. Council President, these are all at Bryant Park, isn't that the county?
Yeah, we're going to have to alert the county, no question.
And, and maybe a little more information on where the nails are.
Yeah, but if there's something dangerous, we're going to certainly have to address it.
Right, but it's a big park. If we could get a little more guidance on where the nails are, that would be helpful, too.
Yeah.
So it's on the pathway.
It's on the path.
Right.
Okay.
Hi. How are you? Eric Kozasky, 169 Broad Street. Just had a question as related to the orange cones and barriers that we now see on Broad Street between Park Avenue and, what is it, Walnut Street, Walnut Ave? I'm not good with street names. I do, I've since learned that there was an ordinance passed last year, last December, for the creation of 17 parking spots. The note that went out, City of Summit, I think it was three days ago at this point in time, just as related to the temporary traffic patterns and allowing an opportunity for Summit Police and Engineering to observe and make necessary adjustments. I would kindly ask, potentially engage additional resident feedback as well. I know this was on the table last year, I'm super visual myself. I do have concern just in terms of the traffic on Broad Street, and then just also from a safety perspective as well. We will have both the fire trucks as well as other emergency vehicles that are going up to the hospital. What also piqued my interest, that Councilwoman Levine had pointed out, the 648 additional parking spots at Overlook. Currently, I understand that two of those levels are not utilized, so potentially there's some opportunity to redirect the 17 parking spots to another location. They do want to further expand, so it's not necessarily a silver bullet solution, but potentially there are some other creative solutions for those 17 parking spots. So just comment there, and was questioning as to whether the, the 17 parking spots, which are for employee parking, is that specifically for the firemen and women or for other, for other city employees as well? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, number one is the 17 parking spaces are employee parking spaces that are available to purchase through the city website, so employee parking permits. So there are a bunch of people, a bunch of employee, of businesses on Park Avenue, and then there's businesses on Broad Street, and then of course there's the downtown, but, and so that's the, all the same permit, but Park Avenue probably is, is more likely to be the ones utilizing those spaces. I, you know, I live on that side of town, and so I drive Broad Street, you know, multiple times a day. I remember this conversation from last December, and I'm thrilled that we're finally implementing it, because what would happen is, people would park illegally out in front of Solarno Duane anyway, and then people would race up the street in the two lanes, and then you'd have one person realize, oh God, this person in front of me is not driving, they're parked here illegally. And then what they do is they very dangerously cut in left to all those people that are driving legally in a lane of traffic, and that's very unsafe. And all of that then would happen, then, and then those two lanes together would converge in front of each other, right in, beyond the walnut and broad traffic light, and that's right where we have fire trucks now that are going to have to soon come in and out of the firehouse. So I think this is a great step in the right direction. If it turns out that it creates a horrible traffic mess, I think we should go back and look at it, but that's, that's my recollection of that conversation from almost a year ago now.
And it's not firefighters that are parking there?
No, not firefighters. It's the, it's the, the down, employee parking permit that's available to purchase. Yeah. Anything else on that? Nope.
Michelle Kalmanson, 67 Butler Parkway. My children are nine and 11. As they have grown and needed me less, I have taken on more and more volunteer work. For the first time this year, volunteering to serve the Summit community has been a full-time job. Recently, my daughter looked at our dining room table covered in papers from the different committees I was working on and asked, you do all of this for free? No one pays you any money? Why? I told her that I love Summit, and I'm proud to spend my time volunteering to make it even better than it already is. This is why I, along with many others, was so heartbroken to watch the negative campaign launched against David Naidoo in the mayoral race, through a constant, excuse me, through a constant bombardment of videos, social media posts, letters, and postcards maligning his character, inciting fear, and spreading disinformation. Mr. Naidoo has faithfully served our town for 16 years, helping it grow and change for the better. Watching the Together for Summit ticket and their supporters shred his character for months has left me feeling that this town does not value its public servants, and has led me to feel that to those who disagree with me politically, my contributions to Summit mean nothing. Moving forward, I would like to ask Councilmember Hamlet, Councilmember Allen, and the entire Together for Summit ticket what they have to say to me and others like me who are now struggling to find the motivation to give up family time, time with my children, after what we have witnessed during this campaign. Was this your goal all along, and how do you plan to repair the damage that has been done to our community? I have pictures of two postcards, which I think everybody has already seen, but I found it interesting that Mr. Boyer came up here, and he thanked everyone for their service, and this is how we thank people for their service. So I would like to add these to my statement, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything? Okay.
I mean...
Up to you.
Yeah. I, I cannot, I didn't put out those flyers, so I can't speak to the politics of all of it, but what I want to say is that I appreciate what you do. it, but what I want to say is that I appreciate what you do. I understand that, I'm sure, I can only imagine the stacks of paper that are on your table, and a lot of people in Summit give their time and dedication. And the reason why we do that is because, early on, generally, from my experience, you become friends with your neighbors, and you volunteer in the school, you volunteer at the Y, you guys have swimming lessons together, football, soccer, you know, orchestra, you know, you play different events in the elementary. That's where I started. And so, I've been through a few cycles of campaigns, and they're never, they're never great. So, I, I can't respond to the flyers, but what I can respond to is how I can act, you know, as your councilperson, and moving forward, and how we can bring this community to a place of unity. I have worked very well with my colleagues, and, one, I would like to say that, in terms of Andy, nobody should be attacked. What happened to him is unacceptable. I would never want that for anyone. I've worked really well with Councilwoman Levine, and, who is currently on my committee with me. She said that, you know, once you're up here and you're working on committees, that you're doing the work of the city. I've worked with, I know Councilwoman Fox and I, sometimes we spar, but at the end of the day, you know, I respect her, I respect you, and Councilwoman Vartan, we've had numerous conversations, so, you know, I think at the end of the day, you know, I'm not going to sit here and make excuses for a campaign. People have to speak for themselves. I can't speak on behalf of others. But what I can say is that, you know, I'm happy to do what it takes to make sure that we serve Summit the best way that we can. So that's, you know, I don't know, I feel like it's, I understand that I don't want you to be disheartened and disengaged, because at the end of the day, I feel like it's important to know that we're all here for the right reasons, even when we disagree.
Okay, Mayor.
I've lived in this town for 34 years. Not quite as long as Councilmember Sank. And I've spent many, many hours volunteering. People are actually shocked that nobody gets paid up here. I mean, it costs us money, but that's fine, because that's what we love. We love this town, we love the work we do. And Elizabeth, please correct me if I'm wrong, but when we met last week, and last Thursday, we talked about the divisiveness that has entered our community, and you asked me if I would work with you to try to bring things together, to try to bring some unity back. I'll do anything to make this community the best it can be. It was, no one liked what we saw at this time. Let's all be honest. It was not pretty. We shouldn't go there. We shouldn't do that. And, and let's, let's do our very, very best to put an end to it, to work together, and not ignore it, not deny it, admit it, and put an end to it. And so, that's, you know, I'm, I'm walking off into the sunset in another month and a half, but I am not leaving this town, and I will be a vocal proponent of bringing this community back to where it ought to be. So, that's what I have to say to you.
Thank you, Mayor.
So thank you for your comments, and I know it's brave to get up here, and thank you for your volunteerism. I would say that, you know, I give the mayor so much credit for reaching out to Mayor-Elect Fagan. I think that was a really big step in, in showing that we are unified, and as a, as a, last year, running and running through a tough election, I can completely empathize with things getting, getting ugly, and I think we can just all work to be better. I really enjoy working with Andy, and I, the first day you told me that that happened to you, I'm sincerely sorry that that happened to you, and, and we all have to work towards making Summit better, and I look forward to any and all of your ideas, and thank you for coming up and for your comments, and I hope we can work together to make it better.
Thank you. Anything else, public comments? All right, I'm going to close the public comment period, and we're going to move on to councilmember comments and new business. Nope. Then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. And we have a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you very much.